Good evening. I'd like to call the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors PM meeting this Thursday, September 18th, 2025 at 6:30 PM to order. We'll start, please. Oh, I want to remind everybody a recording device will be in use during the meeting. Let's open the meeting with a plug allegiance to the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, free, and just for all.
Public comments for agenda items. Rules for conduct of public meetings established by Resolution 2001-08 state that the time allocated to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Any public comment? Seeing none, I will move on to minutes of the previous meeting of September 4th. Is there a motion to, well, is there any, is there a motion or discussion items?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The Treasurer's Report, Authorization to Pay Bills, and Approved Payroll. I have personally reviewed the Treasurer's Report in detail, and in fact, we already signed the checks, so I've reviewed the checks. Anybody want to make a motion to accept it?
I'll second.
All right, I'll make the motion. Please, Kyle, second it. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Reports, Township Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have just one item, and then I'll reserve the rest of my commentary for agenda items later on. Pennsylvania's Act 205 mandates that pension plan administrators report the following year's pension minimum municipal obligation, or MMO, for the coming year by September 30th of each year. Thanks to help from the Chief of Police, staff is now prepared to report what next year's minimum municipal obligations will be. For the non-uniformed plan, it will be $91,821, and for the uniformed pension plan, the MMO for next year will be $288,116. That is the end of my report.
Okay. Is there an Assistant Manager's Report?
Yes, there is, Mr. Chairman.
There is, okay.
Thank you. Just a couple of things to report out on. First is, the township is in the process of preparing and applying for the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protections 904 Recycling Performance Grant. This annual grant provides funding to municipalities based on the tonnage of materials recycled during the previous calendar year. This grant rewards municipalities for recycling efforts, and funds may be used to support ongoing recycling operations, public education, and future recycling program enhancements. The township is also in the process of applying for the PICO Green Region Open Space Program Grant. This grant provides up to $10,000 to support local efforts to improve public spaces and expand equitable access to the outdoors. The township's application would seek funding for the United We Play All Abilities Playground at the East Brandywine Community Park. And then just coming up, we had a couple of events for the community. On Sunday, September 21st, at 3:00 PM here at the Township Building, the Historical Commission has their speaker series, "Symbols, Marks, and Signs Hidden in Open View: Close Look at Barn Walls and Other Material Surfaces." Then on Sunday, October 5th, at 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM, we have our Fall Harvest Festival at the East Brandywine Community Park. And then on Sunday, October 19th, at 3:00 PM here at the Township Building, the Historical Commission is putting on another speaker series, "Historical Bridges of Chester County: Reserving Our Legacy." And that's all I had to report out on.
Thank you. Building Inspector's Report.
Shall I read that for the record, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please.
All right. Total building permits issued for the period ending August 2025 were 27. Total of seven building permits, zoning permits were issued. Fees collected for all building and zoning permits in that period was $29,572.54. There were a total of 23 use and occupancy permits issued. 210 inspections in the field were completed, and there were five failed inspections. Total fees collected in the period was $29,972.54. This report is respectfully submitted by Noran King, permits administrator.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? The Township Roadmaster's Report, Mr. Van Lu.
Thank you. Last week, Foreman Derek Kloss and I, along with Pipe Data View, conducted stormwater pipe inspections in the Marshall Creek Development, which is also known as Aspen Drive off of Marshall Road. We inspected approximately 300 feet of corrugated metal pipe. Pipe Data lowers a camera mounted on a truck which drives through the pipes, taking video along the way. Pipes that are damaged are noted on the video. There are a few pipes that will be visually inspected next week. And when I said we inspected 300 feet, I believe we inspected about 1,000 feet. Derek and I viewed the video in our office to determine the condition of the pipes, enclosed as our report, a couple of screenshots that indicate the condition and recommendations for pipelining. In 2015, we had approximately 500 feet of pipeline in the same development at a cost of about $100 per foot. We have determined that about 400 feet of the pipe is in immediate need of lining. About 450 feet will be reevaluated in two to four years for further deterioration. And over 900 feet of the pipe was determined to be in excellent condition and should be reevaluated, reevaluated in about 10 years. We're developing a scope of work to obtain quotes for the pipelining. This will be presented at a future board meeting. Excuse me. In addition to obtaining a quote for Aspen Drive, we'll be obtaining an additional quote for Kristin Circle Stormwater Pipes. There's two 36-inch corrugated metal pipes in desperate need of lining. We hope to have this project completed by the end of the year, and there are funds that are currently budgeted for this project. Our fall leaf collection will be the weeks of October 27th, November 10th, and December 1st. Please have your leaves at curbside on Monday of those weeks for collection. Last year, the department collected a record 359 tons of leaves. For additional information, please visit the township's website. Thank you.
Matt, maybe you said it and I missed it, but what is the life expectancy of the relining?
Of the lining? I believe it's 50 years.
50 years?
Yeah.
And what were the corrugated pipes that were in there? How old?
The Aspen Drive is probably 30 years old, I believe.
So it's better to reline them than replace them?
Yeah. A lot of it depends on the soils that they were, that they were set on. You know, some of them, like I said, some are really rusted out. You can see it.
Yeah, I saw the pictures.
And then some of them, we ran the truck through, and they look like they were just put in yesterday. So I think it depends on what soils they were placed on.
That corrugated pipe is no longer permitted to be used. Yeah, but I was just thinking it was better to replace it with the MPDS pipe.
It would be, but some of these pipes are like eight feet in the ground, and to dig them up and replace them is sort of cost prohibitive. So, I mean, we looked at that also.
What about, do they make an MPDS that you can, you can feed through that's sized down?
They do, but you have to have a opening of one end. So like for a covert where it crosses underneath the road and it's open on both ends, that's good for pushing through that, that type of pipe. The other pipe, they actually pull a liner through it, blow it up, and then one company treats it with steam, and then another company runs ultraviolet lights through it, and that's what cures it. Quite a process.
Yep. Any other questions? All right, the Chief, you're up with the Police Department Report.
Good evening. On Friday, September 5th, three assessors from the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission visited the Police Department to conduct our onsite re-accreditation inspection. I'm honored to report to the board tonight that the inspection went very well and that we have been recommended for another three-year accredited period. I received confirmation this past week that our assessment report and that recommendation will be reviewed by the commission on Thursday, October 23rd, at 10:30 AM in Campville, PA, and that's at their quarterly meeting. Deputy Chief and I and Detective Farnish will be attending that meeting, and I'd like to extend an invitation to any of the board members, Township Manager or Assistant Township Manager, to attend with us if they'd like. The department had 2,287 events reported this month. We conducted 244 investigations. There were five criminal arrests, one summary arrest. We had no warrant or juvenile petitions. We had seven traffic accidents, issued 79 traffic citations. There were 43 traffic warnings issued, and officers logged 9,640 miles of patrol. We had no training attended this month, and attached is a letter from the Accreditation Commission for your review. You also have copies of the monthly investigations and the officer activity report. And finally, I'd just like to comment on the heels of the tragedy that took place yesterday. Northern York County Regional PD just asked that you all keep the officers or families in that community in your prayers. Thank you.
Chief, just something, it is a tragedy. I know a lot of people in York County. Do we do special training on warrants? I know warrants, especially domestic violence, but you know.
I think every police agency does that.
I was just shocked that that was so gruesome.
I think as more details come out in the next couple of weeks, we'll get a better review of what actually happened. I mean, there's so many different stories in the news right now.
I know, but we should try to use it as a learning tool.
Right, and we've been talking about it all day in the department. We have two officers, well, one's not presently on the team, but we have two officers that are, myself, have special weapons and tactics training, and we periodically go through scenarios with everybody in the PD when we have time.
And that was a fairly large regional department, wasn't it?
Oh, they're very, yeah. There's, that's all they have after are regional PDs. So that was, you know, for five officers, I know one of them was a sheriff, but that, that's a tragedy that all police chiefs have a nightmare of. We just pray that never happens, and as I said, I think more details will come out over the next couple of weeks, and then you get a better review, and you know, how the tragedy comes, learning and whatnot, but you just pray it's not you.
Thank you for your comments.
Fire Chief.
Good evening. We had 64 total calls for the month, 36 fire, 28 medical. We had 13 fire and 21 medical in East Brandywine, 17 fire, 7 medical in West Brandywine, and one fire called Upper Euclid. We had an average personnel response of nine for regular calls and 17 for major incident types. We used 195.6 gallons of East Brandywine fuel, 33 gallons of West Brandywine fuel, for a total of 228.6 gallons of fuel for the month. No fire damage. We had three trainings, average personnel of 24, and a total of 195 total training hours. I got a couple extra things here. So our old rescue truck is finally sold. It felt like it took forever, but it finally did get sold. So we got some, we got a decent chunk of change for that back, which was really nice. The new rescue truck, I'm happy to announce that it's about a week away from, from completion, and we'll have it back here. So should be a short time after that. We just have to do a quick in-service for all of our drivers. So most of our drivers from the old rescue truck will just transfer right over to that, but we have to do a manufacturer's.
Right, so get in a new car.
Yeah.
Got to learn it. Driving isn't the issue. It's all the buttons.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yep, yep. The only good thing is, is with all the buttons, our, our current engine in the ladder truck, they're all very similar. So it's kind of streamlined. Also, with, with the coming month in October, fire prevention's going to be kicking off. So fire prevention for the schools start on October 1st through the 10th. We do four elementary schools and one preschool, and we also have the open house, which we extend our invitation to the open house on Wednesday, the 15th.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Main question.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So August was another busy month for us. Call volume continues to trend upward compared to last year. We had, our staffing remains the same, allowing us to maintain the high level of care our community deserves. In the process of owning more than a couple of full-time positions, which will give us a little bit more consistency with call shifts and make it easier to cover calls as they come in, because right now what we're seeing is the fourth calls, if you notice, you report, third and fourth call kind of flip. So fourth calls, like the extra calls during the daytime hours, whereas third is during the evening hours. Beyond emergency response, our crews are back on the football standbys and supporting community events, from medical emergencies to helping residents at local festivals and events. August reminded us that two, that two days are never the same. Other than that, I'll stick up for the next, the next point about the capital purchase. Unless you have any questions.
Any questions? You've got that pilot program, are you guys are going to do a pilot station or a satellite station?
So we currently have one. We entered into a two-year lease in Thorndale, right on the highway. So we have 60 hours of coverage per day. That's two 24-hour trucks and a 12-hour truck. So during the daytime hours, when it's the heaviest, we are running three MCCs during that, during that time, but we're still seeing those fourth calls increase. So we're keeping an eye on it to see how we can better, you know, acclimate to that, that call volume demand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Old business. This is very old business. I don't believe there is. New business, the 2025 EMS capital allocation. Levin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So included in your packet this evening is a invoice to Minquist Fire Company, number two EMS division. The invoice is for $20,671.27. Also included in your package is a multi-municipal cost-sharing agreement adopted by this board in December of last year. The cost-sharing agreement is between the communities that make up Minquist EMS service area, and included in that cost-sharing agreement was an anticipated capital expenditure. Shown on the screen is the new ambulance 46-3. Is it in service currently?
No, so it's currently at click. We utilize the same vendor as East Brandywine Fire Company. It's expected to make its final appearance here at home either early next week. So it is not currently in service.
Well, it'll be, it looks like an excellent addition to the, to the apparatus pool. The amount that is shown on the invoice represents East Brandywine Township's fair share of the capital acquisition, and by fair share, the municipalities determine fair share as our portion of the total calls for service. So for East Brandywine Township, that would be 8.63% of the acquisition. As you may recall, my spending authority does not exceed $10,000. So at this time, in light of the acquisition and the multi-municipal agreement, I respectfully ask board permission to pay invoice 399 in the amount of $20,671.27.
Any questions? I'll make a motion to pay to Minquist Fire Company, number two, for the acquisition of the 2025 F450 four-by-four ambulance in the amount of $20,671.29. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I will, I will say, thank you. Thank you for that. This is, this is a rare occurrence for EMS. This is unprecedented, where municipalities step up to the plate and help. So we thank you for being the trendsetters, and we thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
I hope I never see the inside of it.
You can come, you can come see it at any time, but I understand what you're saying.
Okay. 7B Heritage Metal, request for required parking determination for 39, 399-108G.
Yeah, there's a couple pertaining to the Board of Supervisor approval.
I'm sorry, can you speak up?
Oh, sorry. There's a couple of that pertaining. One of them is the parking, the other one would be for interior circulation, which was 399-42G. So I'm not sure, I guess many of you are familiar with what we're trying to do, Heritage Metal Works, the expansion. We've taken some time and expense to be able to put together plans, civil plans particularly. We're not working on architecturals, but you have a general idea of what it looks like to be able to find out the, the magnitude of expense that we're going to have to put into this and whether we can even do it. So it looks like we've submitted application for stormwater and then also for zoning. Everything seems pretty straightforward and manageable except for the interior circulation and parking. And prior to this, we had a few conversations with township members saying, all right, we think this is, this is good. It's going to work. But now I'm here to ask you guys if you're okay with it. So the plans submitted are basically what we're, we're looking to do. Parking, we know we're under. We're not going to be able to get enough, but we're doing a expansion because we need square footage. We don't need people. We will be adding people, but the main reason we're doing this is because we need the floor space to be able to create and produce our product, store it, put it inside, and so forth. So I don't know, I don't know where we go from here, other than.
This is your time for the board, but if I may, and with the Chairman's permission, may I just introduce why this is at a point where the board is involved?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So.
Can you make this a little bigger?
I no longer drive, but yes, there we go. Both of the owners of Heritage Metal Works are here tonight. Thank you. We're here because of an ARO review letter dated August 20th. That ARO review letter issue, notes the issues you described. And if I could summarize this as not the zoning officer, that our township code doesn't attempt to describe every conceivable use and prescribe parking requirements for those uses. It describes some general categories of uses and then describes the parking required. The zoning officer, in reviewing your application, encountered that there was no category in our code that matches exactly what your business model is. She also noted that in our code, when such a circumstance arises, the board decides which category of use most closely matches your business, hence the need to ask the board for the required number of parking, or more specifically, what type of parking requirements should apply to your project. I will say for the, for the board's benefit, and I'm speaking not as the zoning officer, your packet includes the ARO letter in question, and it also includes the section of our code called 399-108, or Schedule of Required Parking. On my, again, not zoning officer determination, I think that the class of parking that is closest to the business model of Heritage Metal Works is described in the section marked industry, and the requirement there is one parking space for every 500 square feet of gross building area, or one space for each employee at your largest shift, whichever is larger. So based on my non-binding guess of what's closest, when I look at what's proposed, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at 4,269 square feet of new, an expansion of an existing building on the site.
In addition, yeah.
When I divide 4,269 by 500, I get 8.54. So rounding up, I see nine parking spaces, and I see on the plan in front of us here that you have marked seven. So even with, so I don't know what the board's opinion would be, but I'll tell you that just my guess at the closest match would be industrial, and, and it looks like there's two spaces short if that were the determination. I just want to ask for my own edification, is two spaces impossible to get?
I believe so, especially with the size of the, the retention basin. I don't know where else we would be able to get that from.
Isn't that the maximum spaces, not, not the required?
Our code describes the minimum required parking, and I have to say.
So the formula comes up with nine instead of seven, which is what you're saying.
The formula that I, the formula that I chose, again, this is the board's discretion. I don't think that there is a more liberal interpretation of the required parking available for the board to select, but I do appreciate that there's a couple of things going on. One, it's in our traditional neighborhood development, and we like to keep impervious to a minimum. And two, that industry doesn't exactly describe your business model. You have more square footage than you would have employees because it's a craftsman shop, not a factory.
Yeah.
So I appreciate what you're saying. I'm just trying to, if I had to guess which section of code is closest without being an exact match, I would say it's that.
I would agree with you, probably, yeah.
And so I don't, I don't know, not to put our solicitor on the spot.
But you will.
But I will.
I, I agree with your analysis. The only thing I heard, I thought I heard you say is he's two spaces short, but I think your analysis shows he needs 33 spaces.
Well, there's, there's two interpretations of that, and unfortunately, I don't have the table that's in my report to project for everybody's benefit, and I don't know that I can get it quite quickly, other than to put it on the camera. Noah, if you could help me?
While, while they're doing that, aside from what we have in our paper, does, does two less or two, two more help hurt you in parking spaces? But you know what your need is more than we do.
It's not, not really. Like, we're not.
Like you have 15 customers at the same time.
We don't get, yeah, we're not customers like that.
Right.
Most of the stuff shipped out, or we deliver stuff like that. So foot traffic maybe.
But the park, the park is for employees.
It's, it's for employees.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. It's more his, his issue right now, in my opinion, than our issue.
Yeah, and we have other parking on the property, too. This is just in addition to that, which we don't fill up even when we have our staff there. We're close to it, but we don't.
So I counted, and maybe I missed something, but for the whole, the whole, the whole struc, the whole campus, after construction, I counted 28. Is that what?
Yeah.
All right, but let me ask you this question, Lou. What do we measure in those spots? At 10-foot, 9-foot?
They're shown as 10 by 20, I believe.
On the new ones. The old ones, we were approved prior, like 13 years ago.
That's exactly right, because what I was getting at is, there's, exactly, there's.
But we're looking to add one to the addition, not change the configuration of the old.
But you're also tapped, tapped on to it. It's still touching?
Um, yeah, it was, it's a warehouse. It wasn't, yeah, it's like an annex storage, basically is what it was.
And could you switch the handicap to where the, where it's striped for people who will have to get in and out using wheelchairs or other things? will have to get in and out using wheelchairs or other things?
That...
And then move that over to the right, one, one space that you're not using?
Yeah, we can move that wherever, all right.
And that'll get you a space?
Well, it takes us a space, but there's, there's potential...
No, 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 if you go back to that, your drawing, well, can we try to establish how many spaces are actually needed?
And, and I'm happy to, to continue with the table to that end, if, if, again, this is the, the chairman's meeting, I don't wanna speak, I'll speak when recognized.
Agreed.
Even, I'm gonna jump in here, even if you had...
This is what Carl was just talking about.
Right, so move, move this to handicap and move that...
But I think that that's considered a spot too, probably.
No, it's not, it's not.
And it could be.
See, that's what I'm trying...
And that's what you're thinking?
Yes. That makes sense?
It does to me.
Here, here's other, other logic, like this, this property is very, very challenging to develop.
Well, yeah.
Right? To you, it's, it's good they made it riparian exempt, because if it wasn't, nobody would touch this property with a 10-foot pole and it never would be developed, and probably never would have been...
Well, your business has grown a little over the years.
But anybody who's gonna come in there and want to develop it, you're going to have a parking issue anyways.
Right.
So it's...
All right, so...
Go ahead, Mr. Brad.
Yeah, so the, the, the question that, that our solicitor is referring to is exactly how you operationalize required spaces. And in my table, again with the camera feed, I, I had one, I said, let's just think of this as there's adding 4,269 new square feet, and say, well, okay, the required parking for that new addition would be nine spaces. Another way to think of it is the whole campus after the construction, and, and then I've counted the square footage of the whole campus after construction at 16,537, um, which divided by 500 equals 33.07, and that instance, you round down per the code, so there would be 33 spaces. So another way to look at, so you could look at the, again, making the assumption that I have correctly recommended the correct closest match for parking requirements. You could look at it as the campus is two spaces short for the new addition, or you could look at it as the campus is five spaces short overall.
All right, well, I think it's, I'm sorry.
This is where an attorney's opinion matters very much.
I think it's fair to say that we only have to consider the new. So if you consider only the new, they need seven spaces, I'm sorry, they need nine spaces, and they're too short. Can you find two spaces?
I, I don't think we can, I think we're up against, all right, with the stormwater.
I don't know what that's, land, land is it, switching the handicap and using what you're not using now for the van, or just, you see, I'm talking about...
So everything, we've had it surveyed, what's in count?
Oh, you bring that all the way over to the, right there, where you showed that space.
Yeah, maybe we could squeeze one more out, but then we're encroaching on stormwater, I'm not, and I don't know what the, that we're encroaching on the basin, and we've gotta kinda stay away from some of that stuff too.
Well, you have, you have the, um...
I'm assuming that it's already, yeah, I'm assuming that's already, that part's, see, I don't have it, I'm assuming that's already...
Now, the dark, the dark black line, that is not, there's gray lines where it's existing.
Now, he's talking about on the, on the handicap spot that you have on the proposed building.
Yeah.
See the, the, the crosshatched area next to it to the right?
Correct.
That's for the wheelchair access?
For, probably.
He's suggesting move the handicap spot over to where the crosshatched is, and move the crosshatched over to the, to the non-spot that's not marked out as a spot?
It's just eight then, you can do that.
Yeah, then you have eight spaces.
So what's going on with, it's showing a propane tank, Matt, does that tank actually exist there?
Propane tank?
Yeah, it's a shadow line that's on this plane.
Yeah, the propane tank at the back of the existing building.
Oh, the little one, oh, no, that, that's gonna get moved.
All right, so when it comes down there, you technically have another spot.
Well, yeah, we were counting that one, yeah. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yeah, probably not then, I don't know why I put that there then.
Yeah, it didn't, didn't look like it was counted, so, I mean, I think we got nine. Sounds good.
Just a question, clarification question. What if employees live together and communicate?
I can't hear you.
She's, she's asking, what if the employees live together and communicate together?
Because there's three of us that live together and communicate, so if we take one spot, I'm just curious, that doesn't matter in a normal...
May I, Mr.?
Yes.
So, so, and I'm sorry, if we're gonna, if we continue the dialogue, I'd like you to come up.
Yeah, you have to come on, yeah.
But, but, the, the, again, um, a, a, a shop such as you're the co-owner of doesn't exist in our code, no one could anticipate that exact business model where you are doing light manufacturing and some retail of historically accurate fixtures. So the zoning officer is tasked with reviewing your plan and recommending the required number of spaces. Well, no one anticipated that use, and so she gets to that section and she says, you need to ask the board, what's the closest match? So the first assumption is what's the closest match, and we've all been talking like they're taking my advice, but they're not required to take my advice. That section reads, one parking space for every 500 square feet, or one parking space for the largest shift per person. So let's just say that you had, um, 33 people working there on the AM shift, then you would need 33 spaces. The rest of that sentence is whichever is greater. So that means if you had five people working on your shift, you still need 33. Sorry for the, the, yeah, is what it is, uh, the code.
So we're gonna, we're gonna come over, we need to just make a decision on this plan. We're good, or we're good with it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it.
So, so say I came up short one when we finish up stormwater, because we can't encroach some stuff.
Handicap and, and the handicap access area, you'll have eight.
And, and I would take it a step further and say that for me personally, even if you were to go to 9-foot spaces, I think you would, you would get it in there as well.
Oh, I know 9-foot, yeah.
Yeah, and, and again, I mean, you, you, you probably don't even have 9-foot spaces on your existing building.
Uh, I believe we do.
Do you?
Yeah, I think we do, I think that's what we're approved for.
Well, I would like to, is there a way to make a, what do we, what, what is our task? To make a resolution?
Yeah, I, I think someone needs to make a motion that, uh, you've determined that this use is most similar to a warehouse, and that parking requirement shall be used, and you approve the provision of nine spaces on the site for the...
Well, no, no, no. It's seven.
Well, prove...
I, I wish we could.
So seven.
Well, I think we found it then, can we, can we, so, so we can't even say, where'd you go? We can't, we can't even say nine feet, that can't be...
I don't know what the ordinance says, I don't know whether we're allowed to have eight, nine by 18, it describes minimum lot size.
I would outline the, uh, the motion to say, you know, we approve the plan as depicted, or the plan as depicted.
Or we're allowed, I thought we couldn't change it from nine.
Oh. Okay, I, I, I definitely understand the, the spirit of that. We have, uh, all, an existing business that we welcome, and they're making continuing investments in our community, which we welcome, and it seems silly to draw a line in the sand over two parking spaces. But I, I have to say that I, as administrator, cannot disregard what the code says, and I cannot, and I don't find anything in our code that has a more, uh, permissive or liberal required spaces that we could, we could even say that is. Like, for example, a retail use, we just said it was retail, actually requires more spaces, but that makes sense because they have guests. So in a sense, industrial is our most liberal interpretation of required parking. I would say that we have, we have, um, three options. Ask that we find a way to fit nine, um, commit to reviewing what is required in our code with an eye towards the fact that the TND2 neighborhood, if we want to encourage development in it, and it is a very tight space, maybe we need to think critically about the required spaces, or we can encourage the applicant to seek a variance to put in seven instead of nine.
This count is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, maybe, and maybe you have nine, nine, if you can move that down a little bit, see, it's, you can't tell because of the scale, it's not the scale. This can't be moved anymore because of stormwater.
Okay.
Is that the correct case?
I, I...
The area, is that, is it, is the area you're showing here paved up to the little, little hook area?
Yeah, that, that'll all be paved, and then there's gonna be stone there at the end of that, like, goes into the basin.
So why can't you squeeze a space out of there?
Can't move that.
Um, we might be able to, shifting things around, but right now, like, kinda...
But you could definitely, you could definitely move the handicap.
Yeah, we can move the handicap for sure.
Okay, so that gives you an eight.
Line straight up.
I think we can get eight, I, literally, we can get eight there, I'm just concerned about the nine.
What, what is it about this section of the parking lot where it comes close to the stormwater that is limiting you from drawing this line up and squaring it off and getting two spots on the end there?
Uh, it's the size of the retention basin.
Yeah, if, if you put it more impervious...
And it has to be banked and sloped the right way, so it's...
Terrific cost to redo everything. I mean, you gotta pretty much work with what's already there.
Hey, is there any way you could mark out a space inside one of the buildings? Maybe you wouldn't use...
What's that?
Could you paint a spot inside one of the garages?
Yeah, so you have one indoor space, uh, you, that's up to you whether you wanna use it or you don't wanna use it.
Yeah, I've got a spot.
You have a garage door, you, there's no different...
There's two garage doors on the build, the existing building we're adding on to.
See, Tom, that's why you're here, because he had to redraw this, that?
No, no.
Because he would just paint it on by the garage door.
No, 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 I'm talking about moving the handicap.
No, 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 it would go into the existing, yeah, there's a garage door there already.
All you're asked to do today is make a determination that this use is most similar to a warehouse, and based on the zoning, where there's nine parking spaces are required. Don't move it.
I'll second that.
Somebody has to make their motion.
Oh, I thought you was... All right. Would you like to make the motion?
No.
All right.
Go ahead, Chair.
Uh, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that, Tom, what was?
The board makes a determination that the...
The board makes the determination...
That the use proposed by the applicant...
That the use proposed by the applicant...
Is most similar to a warehouse.
Is most similar to a warehouse.
And based on...
And based on...
The ordinance, nine parking spaces are required.
Requires nine parking spaces. Sir, a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, got another one. It didn't, it didn't end here, this is, um, this, this interior circulation. So again, zoning said, all right, you gotta have Board of Supervisors take a look at this, and basically what it is, it's a right-of-way, um, it's 39, uh, 399-82. Did you have that one moved?
Uh, the, the board has the, the letter of August 20th in their packet?
So number two?
And there is number two on that letter, on page two, there, yes, it, it does have the language of 399-82.c, parentheses, one.
So, um, we won't be able to meet that, that with, the egress and so forth, but we're right there, I've asked the police or fire chief about that, um, in my mind, we've got a fire, a fire hydrant right across.
You got a fire station right there.
Got a fire station right, right out front, so, um...
They got a creek too.
Yeah, we got a creek, then we got wetlands right behind, we can go dig a hole, make a pond. So there's no shortage of water. Uh, I, what I'm asking is, uh, for the board, um, to give a suggestion or an exception to that.
Is that a special exception that has to go before the zoning hearing, or?
Uh...
What it said is, the applicant shall demonstrate compliance with the emergency access requirements of this section. I thought I saw a letter from the fire chief saying he's happy. After you've reviewed the plans provided, I find them acceptable and can be marked and approved by the fire chief.
Are you happy with it?
It wasn't me that signed it, but from looking at this plan, we, we could make this work.
So I think the board can make a determination that it complies with section, that's it.
Section 399-82.
Right.
Any other, any further discussion?
No. Anything else? All of them get it all, get you...
All right, one more.
Well, I'd like to do them in separate rivers.
So, uh, one?
No, no, we're gonna finish this one then.
I want, I want... You don't want two together and have one become a problem?
Yep.
So, I'll make a motion that we are... Is it a laser?
And find, find that the plan complies with section 399-82c1.
I make a motion that we, that the Board of Supervisors finds that it complies with 399-82?
C1, correct.
C1. Sir, a second? I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're on a roll.
All right, last one, and thanks for your time, I don't mean to be holding you up. So in our submission application to Cedarville Engineering, uh, there was a comment about, um, and I talked to our civil engineer about it, and he says, you know what, I think he can deal with this. The first comment said that there's a submission, uh, submission shall be made to the Conservation District regarding the proximity of the existing wetlands in sight. Um, we've, we've gone back and forth a little bit, we've actually met with some of the people, uh, on stormwater, and feel that we don't meet that threshold, um, we don't encroach the creek, we don't encroach the wetlands, uh, we're not over one acre, uh, and we also, he sent me, are not in the FEMA zone. Just asking, um, I guess the board and, and probably gonna have to talk with Stormwater, if that's necessary to go through with, uh, the conservation and the winter five permit application.
If I may, yeah, I, I don't, this, that wasn't presented to the board previously, I don't think we have any information about that. And it seems to me it, it really takes a recommendation from Township Stormwater, whether that's Cedarville, or, I don't know, I guess Cedarville's case.
Okay.
So it's something I think that the engineers need to work on.
Yeah, I'm like, sure, 100%, what was the problem with the stormwater measure? What?
Um, that, so we had submitted civil, so these are civil, sent it over, and one of their comments was, is that a submission should be made to the Conservation District.
Yeah, and I think that they're just asking for feedback for the Conservation District.
That's normal.
Yeah, I think the Conservation District's gonna be involved with anything relating to stormwater from, from any plan.
And don't make their comments.
No, I, I thought, uh, I didn't think it needed to meet that, because we're not part of, you know, we're riparian exempt.
But that happens.
Yeah, but the riparian is separate from stormwater, stormwater is, the stormwater is the, the accumulation of water that you guys are catching and storing on property for the addition, and that is, that is Conservation District's involvement on, on, whether it's residential or commercial, so that, that's normal.
Yeah, it always has to go for conservation.
And they'll, they'll, meaning if, um, if, if it was done wrong and you were leaching contaminated water out, the Conservation District would wanna be aware of that, so they're gonna be involved with that from any way, from, from all cases.
Okay, 'cause it says a determination, so I guess we have to pull an application.
Yeah, i-if I may, what, where, what, is this an email? Yeah, if I may, what, where, is this an email or something on letterhead from Arrow? That has this comment?
Yeah, this is, this is-
This was an Arrow, this was from Cedarville.
From Cedarville. This is from them, it's a comment.
Okay. Well, I will say, but I'm no expert, but the only, the only time we typically make refer, that we require an MPDS permit for the Conservation District is when disturbance exceeds an acre.
Right.
But that doesn't mean that that's the only trigger for it. But if there is another trigger for it, I'm unaware of it.
So you're, they're saying you need an MPDS permit?
That's going to probably be part of it, yeah.
No, you don't think that's wrong.
I thought the only trigger was an acre of disturbance, but this is why we engage experts. I'd like to see why they're recommending that you contact them.
This is a first, we're hearing this.
Okay. All right, then do I need to, I'll get you a copy of the letter then.
Please.
It was from Jeff, right?
Uh, Mike, is it Mike?
Oh, Mika.
Mika.
No, if-
No, no, no.
Cedarville's stormwater.
Stormwater, yeah.
I wouldn't anticipate that this is a project that we wore hand in hand on stormwater management with the Conservation District.
No.
Generally, that's just projects with more than an acre of disturbance, and that's not your project.
Yeah, that's correct, that's, okay, okay.
I would, before we move on, I don't want to circle back to parking, I'm sorry. I thought we had it had in our zoning ordinance, or I guess our land use, that you could have a certain number of compact car spaces that were smaller than 10 by 20. Is that not so? Because then you could make that compact car space.
I'm not prepared to comment on that, I don't know.
I think determination is, he needs nine spaces.
In that garage door.
And how he gets inside him. As long as they comply with the ordinance. And then ordinance might allow 9 by 18. If memory serves, there was a development.
Right.
Some of those were permitted sideways.
Thirty-foot wall.
We were approved prior to 18.
Big trucks can park anywhere.
All right.
Okay. All right, well-
So you got to follow up on that one, please.
Yeah, hopefully we'll talk about that. Okay, all right, no more. Thank you very much, guys, everybody, yeah, really appreciate it.
Okay, moving on, 7C, road crew new hire.
Thank you. After an extensive search, we made an offer of employment to Mr. Joshua Trout, which he has accepted. Josh lives in Westchester. He's been self-employed doing cabinetry and interior renovations. Prior to that, he was employed by Wawa for 15 years, so he has management experience. And I respectfully request approval from the Board of Supervisors to hire Joshua Trout to the Public Works Department, pending passing a background check.
All right, anybody have any questions?
I'm very sorry, just on the conditions, it's also a probationary period?
Yes.
So background check, a CDL, and a probationary period are the conditions?
Yes, within 90 days, has to obtain a CDL permit.
Does all that have to be in the motion, or just a motion to hire him subject to the-
That's within the job specification.
Yeah, an offer letter will spell it out. I think, just a simple motion. But I wanted to make sure the board was aware that there are other conditions of employment.
Okay, unfortunately, I made an error, because I assumed that's, you always have a probationary period. All right, I'll make a motion that we extend a job offer to Joshua Trout to join our Public Works Department, subject to passing all clearances and signing the offer. A second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, subdivision and zoning applications, I see there's none. Ordinances and resolutions for consideration, I see none. Public comment on non-agend items, where we open the meeting to public comment on non-agend items. There are no notices. There were no executive sessions held prior to this meeting. However, after adjournment, we will have a executive committee meeting to discuss personnel matters tonight. So is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.